Hey, welcome everyone to our special meeting. Can we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Roll call, Kate. Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
All right, thank you. So on our agenda, we have just a couple of items tonight, special meeting will take care of some more business at our May sixteenth meeting. But we had some deadlines to meet for the for the Willard HVAC project and for our budget, so we can send it back to the to the public again, May. Was it May twenty third, I think is the next. Okay, so first up is the HVAC for MO or Willard. What do we have for that?
Yes, sir. Give you a quick recap on that one. Project is not something we've been talking about for a while. We get allocated some upper funds, appropriate at last May, maybe in twenty four. So the bids came back last Wednesday. Five bids were received for the Villa HVAC project. You feel construction, that's the construction manager that Public's building, the commission has hired oversee the project, view the proposal. Lowest bidder, all state construction. Thursday, Public Building Commission met and they are recommending that we move forward with all state low bidder. Imperson contingency. Staff, however, is recommending that twenty percent contingency considering the project. And so we're two years integration of the environment of unknowns and moving parts. It's like we found out the abatement issue. And so that's a recap, just to give you a sense of the numbers, the low bidder, you have the bid numbers in your package plus four million sixty three. The twenty percent contingency comes to four million eight seventy five, six hundred. And then new field, construction managed contract was reduced by PBC by four hundred thousand, it's for nine fifty six. They felt the additional contingency was not necessary. So that is five fifty six. So the four million eight seventy five, five hundred fifty six thousand, one two five. And then we also have a bid from, not a bid, a state contract into that. Has Pro for abatement, asbestos removal, that's ninety two, three sixty, that's including your package with the seven thousand dollar contingency for ninety nine, three sixty. The total comes to five million, five thirty one. Forty five and council had appropriated the remaining upper funds last May, a million forty eight. The difference is four hundred and eighty four thousand. So what we are requesting from you, there are four actions that we are requesting. The first one is to award the contract for the Willard HVAC project, the low bidder. All stick construction with a twenty percent contingency to four million seventy five. There's a second action is to amend the construction management services contract, new field by reducing it by four hundred thousand. The third one is to avoid the asbestos removal contract has Pro Inc. That was they're utilizing the state Connecticut contract. The fourth one is to call a town meeting on five eight twenty twenty three. You blew a non budgeted appropriation of four hundred and eighty four thousand. The general fund, it's coming from additional interest that we have earned because of the high interest rate. We have money in that account that we can appropriate.
Great.
So that's the quick recap. Happy to answer any questions.
So question, if I look at the minutes from the Public Building Commission, that we've got a all state construction is four million sixty three thousand.
Yep.
New field construction, four forty one, four hundred and forty one thousand, that's their fee, I guess, right? Management fee, basically. And there's ten percent contingency of four hundred thousand. I see that they discussed the twenty percent contingency, but they decided against it. So why do we edit back in if they're saying they're, so they're giving me a total of four million, nine hundred and four thousand dollars. That's from the Public Building Commission.
That's their recommendation.
Yes.
It's saying the minutes that the town can decide if they want to have additional constru- contingency.
But but there's also new field construction reminded the committee that there's approximately two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars allowances and contingencies already in the price from all state construction. So there's an extra two twenty five already built in. So why would we even go more than that?
Well, so let's say, for example, the coupon gets delayed. And we need to have some alternate space for the board of ed. That's not built into the project. This is
Yeah.
To mitigate any kind of risk that we might encounter two years down the line.
Yeah.
We have been going with twenty percent contingency for other projects because a lot of unknowns multi year, it's going through a two year project via timeframe. This is based on comments I received from our facilities director, he's here, he'd be happy to talk to you and public works director, they have advice to have it when it's in contingency.
Okay, I mean, I, all I can say is, and I, I respect their expertise. But if the Public Building Commission decided it was too much. And if there is, we need more down the road. I mean, we could always deal with it when it happens, obviously, if it's a two year project. I don't see why we'd carry that in the budget, you know, that long. It doesn't make any sense to me. And I'm going by what public building says, you know, and I, and I did speak to one of the members too about it, and they did discuss that. So I would go with the price that they decided with.
It's your call.
Yeah, all right.
And I'm, I'm just
I mean, whatever we all think, but
The reason is, if middle of the project, it's two dollars over, we'll have to do the whole process again. Appropriating funds.
Yeah, I mean, we, we have
Come to you, go to the board of finance, schedule a public meeting, all those things. So we're trying to avoid all of that.
Right.
Feel you're comfortable with the, the number, go for it.
I mean, it's, it's not just me, it's our public building commission who, who I know some of the members, that's what they do for a living. So, and we do too, here in the town, I understand that, but I, you know, what do we have them for if they're making their recommendation? Anyway, that's just my
Just so that I'm clear on this, we already have a contingency number in the plan and what percentage is that?
Two hundred and twenty one thousand.
And that represent what, what's, what percentage of that number?
Four million.
That's roughly five percent, six percent.
Yeah, it's out of the four million sixty three thousand. Plus the four hundred thousand, so that's six hundred and twenty five thousand, right? Total contingency. Is that two twenty five is already in the plan, is, it's already in that four point six million or four
Then we're looking to change it from six twenty five from the building commission to almost a million, well, eight.
What do they want to add in a rush?
Yeah, also the
Four hundred.
Allowances, not just contingent.
Right, but they want to add in twenty, twenty percent. Another ten percent.
Days, whose day?
The, the town is recommending the, the town staff.
Want to add?
Yes.
Yeah.
Another four hundred grand.
Right.
That's a lot of money. I think that we meet often enough that if we have to go back to the drawing board for, you know, an additional amount, I think that that's, you know, it is what it is. I just think that's an awful lot of more money, huge twenty percent is a huge contingency number, I think. It's a lot of money.
Yes, sir.
If anyone's watching, I know Charlie is.
Yeah.
Price of everything is one crazy.
Absolutely.
If this is delayed at all. I don't think that, that contingency will be enough. That what we're asking for.
I mean, again, public building commission. They do construction projects every day, the members in, in their fields, whatever that may be, they, I'm sure are aware of that as we all are, so I I, I, I guess, when, when we have these commissions. And we put experienced people on there and they give us their thoughts, much like planning and zoning gives us their thoughts, much like other commissions. And I know the town does, the, the town employees do too, and they, I, you know, respect their expertise too, but to, to double it when they already had that discussion. And they felt it was too much, I, I would have to go with their recommendation. That would be my opinion. And, you know, if we need it, we'll come back around. I think we could push something through fairly quickly if we need it. I don't think that's ever been a problem. We have a special meeting, we vote on it, there's a special meeting. For the finance and, I mean, it's a two year project, so. We got plenty of time. It's not, it's not like we're in a rush to. No, I, 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 I mean, they, they got a two year project. It's not like they need all the money at, at, at this moment anyway, but yes, sir, come on up, Doug.
Mayor Council.
Yes, how are you?
Quick question for Corporation Counsel, if he could weigh in any insight to what he's seeing out there, municipal projects, relation to the contingency right now.
Sure. I mean, when you talk about contingency, you really can't be married to a specific percentage, right? Because the smaller the dollar amount, the higher the percentage typically. For projects of this scope and size, best practice would be around a fifteen percent contingency. That's typically what trade associations that do cost estimating are recommending for you know, a five million dollar HVAC project would be fifteen percent contingency.
Fifty percent, Jeff?
Yeah.
So that's above what we have, right? With the six, with the two twenty five and the four hundred, and that about sixteen, about fifteen percent. I know some of that's allowances.
See, when we talk about contingency.
Right.
You have to separate owner contingency from contractor contingency, because any contingency that's in the contractor's price is controlled by the contractor.
True.
It's not going to be used to deal with any problems that the owner encounters via change orders or price escalation. So allowances and contractor contingency wouldn't be available to the owner. The owner typically ought to have fifteen percent set aside as a contingency, whether you appropriate it now. Or whether you just understand that down the road, you may need to appropriate it. That's just a planning decision, but in terms of what to expect in this climate for a project of this scope and size, I think fifteen percent would be an appropriate expectation.
I mean, I, I, I agree that I, I'm sure costs will go up. We, we know that. But much like many other projects we've seen through the years, they come back to us when they need it and we approve it. We're not going anywhere. We're here, the council's here, we're all here. And you guys got to come back to us, like you have many times and many projects, we know, we know you can't control those costs. We're gonna approve it. I don't know. I, I don't.
Appreciate the time and certainly in, in respect to the commission and all their efforts and it's the quick little
Sure.
Just that, yeah, it's been since two thousand sixteen for myself.
Right.
And certainly my predecessor, boss John Pager and the previous council, board of ed, board of finance, counselors, town administration, board of administration, this has been years in the making, so we're very excited that this is moving forward.
It's great.
The tragedy and misfortune that came with COVID, funding that did follow is allowing us to step back into our building, air quality, health and safety.
Oh, yeah, it's great.
It's a benefit to the community, certainly with respect to the commission that we know they're, they're watching the project, they are it's in good hands with them. We are just concerned internally that if something come up, we don't want to displace students. These soft costs that the owner outside of project may incur, just wanted to, you know, have that moving forward to save any time or resources, but we know where we are in the budget and where we're at, so we respect anything that is decided upon and we'll work through and work with it, but it wasn't, just credit anybody other than just to give us a little bit more internally to work with, should something come up along the way through the process.
I appreciate it, Doug. Yeah, no, we understand that. I mean. But again, you've come back to us time and time again, not you personally, but the town for extra costs for different projects we've seen through at least the eight years I've been here and we typically ram it through or get it through as fast as possible. And I, I, I don't, I don't think that, you know, there's going to be an emergency that we couldn't handle on, on any given week or, or month with, with a special meeting, much like this and approve it if we need to. We do have a two year time span, so. Go Charlie.
There's a little bit of confusion between the contingency and allowances. Contractor has X number of dollars if the thing is this big, or if we need a bigger one, that's an allowance on the contract, that's really not a contingency. And I didn't study all the documents, but just looking at Has Pro's bid. This is federal money, so I'm assuming it's going to be Davis Bacon prevailing wage project. And the bid excludes the, the federal wages in it, so that's already going to be a thirty percent increase right there in that bid.
That, that's the Has Pro part of it, that's a different
You know, that's a, that's a small part of the project, but
Yeah.
You know, right off the top, he's excluding him because price.
That part.
That part.
That, that's not
I don't know what else is in there. Those are going to be a lot of things, like you say, a project this size over two years.
Yeah.
And we're arguing over five or six percent contingency that may or may not be used if
Right.
If it's in there, it's available for the finance department to pay the bill.
Yeah.
But if we don't use it, the town's going to keep it. It's not like we're giving that money away.
No, I get that.
So it's a bookkeeping discussion more than anything at this point.
I would prefer they come back and see us, just like they do on other projects. That would just be my preference. But we can make a motion and take a vote if we I don't know, what, what do we all, what do we all think about that? Yeah, yeah.
With regard to the contingency, is it part of what we would be approving in terms of the whole total budget or is it kind of held in abeyance, if you will, you know, so how does, how does that work? It's held aside?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, we approve, when we approve though, this for, if we approve the four point, what is it? Nine hundred and four thousand, four million, nine hundred and four thousand, we're approving that whole amount. That includes the contingency of four hundred grand.
It's not part of the PO.
No, but so it's aside, so it's there. If we need it, if we start going through it quickly. Come back around and we'll prove more. I mean, I, you know, it's two years, you know, we've got a lot of time to I, I can't, I can't believe we're gonna, I, I, my God, I hope you don't run through it within a, a few weeks, that would not be good, but who knows today? I mean, I, you know, I get that part, but There are some grants out there we're looking for, yeah, so.
Which number do we want to
So, well. Which part is that, Arash? That is the So why, so that a total amount of four million, eight seventy five, eight hundred and seventy five thousand, six, six hundred. It, it, it would be, why is that lower? Why wouldn't that be four million, nine hundred and four thousand? Why is that amount lower? That's what's
Because the hundred thousand for Has Pro is not in there. That's a separate.
Oh, that's going to be a separate, will that add?
The separate contract. Yeah, right below it.
Okay, that's a hundred grand. That still doesn't add up though. So that's still more than the nine oh four. What, why is that? Was that not, I thought, I, I saw they discussed that at the public building, but I didn't see a cost on it from them. So if you had the hundred grand in, you're at four million, nine hundred and seventy five thousand, whereas they're, they're saying in their minutes that it's four million, nine hundred and four. So even if they add the, it just, it's not adding up with that. Is that just a separate piece? We're not considering in the, in the four point nine million that they approved? Or recommended? Why, why, why are the numbers off? Anybody? No, Doug, do you know? No?
Which document are you looking at?
I was looking at the motion. So, so basically in the first motion, where the contract, right? To all state. And a, an amount not to exceed four million, eight hundred and seventy five thousand. Six hundred. But the contract amount to them is four million, sixty three thousand.
Doubt in contingency.
Okay, so then it would be four million, four hundred and sixty three thousand with the four hundred thousand dollar contingency.
You do ten percent, yes.
Okay, so that, that's the difference there. So we would change that number, right, to four hundred, four hundred and sixty three thousand. So that a hundred thousand, that's just a completely separate piece of it, right? That other motion for the, for the has, has pro?
As pro is a separate.
Got it. So that's going to be four million, four sixty three. Right, then you're right, Peter, what is that?
Got a million.
Yeah, what, right. That's the second motion here, right? Yeah. So where is that? For construction management services. The construction manager is Newfield? It's four hundred and forty one thousand. Why is it nine thirty four?
Because nine fifty six, they're reducing it by four hundred thousand.
By four hundred thousand?
So it would be five fifty six, one two five.
Why, why did public building said the fee was four hundred and forty one thousand? We're still over what they said.
About four forty one and they're keeping still the contingency.
I, I, I don't understand why the numbers changed from what public building voted on. That, that's what I'm they voted, they voted specific numbers, we get here and they're different. That's what's confusing and
Mr. Delaney's on, I don't know if he wants to weigh in, but explain the breakdown. Evan, are you available?
I am. The nine thirty four was previously approved. It was approved for Newfield to do HVAC at Willard and then in anticipation of the town potentially receiving the state, state HVAC grant to do additional commissioning work for Griswold and Hubbard. Now that the town has not received that state grant, they're modifying their approval so that the substantial portion beyond what was intended for HVAC at Willard is being taken out because the town did not, was not awarded the grant. That's the reason for the modification.
So that's why it's down to the five thirty four. Right?
It is down to yes, yes, that's, which is the amount plus about a ninety three thousand dollar contingency. And that's really because if something were to delay the project, if there was something needed. It could very easily require additional services. You know, it's not uncommon for a two year project to have delays or something else that is needed. But they pulled out four hundred thousand dollars. So if you were to look at the motion up above. The original May twenty twenty two appropriation was five million, forty eight thousand, forty six dollars. There've been expenditures and encumbrances, so nine thirty four for Newfield is the biggest piece, but they're having a couple of others. Expenditures. The, they were cost estimating that was done early in the process, PBC requested. So that's nine hundred fifty six thousand, one twenty five, that's currently encumbered or expended. PBC is modifying to pull four hundred thousand out of that. And again, that four hundred thousand was in, in as a contingency in the event the town was awarded the grant. But since we weren't, they're recommending to take that piece out, which is the four hundred thousand dollar modification to the previously approved.
That's related to the state grant round one.
Yeah, I remember that. Yeah, I remember we put in for that.
Has been forward and we're waiting to hear back on that.
Got that.
Round two of the state, yeah.
That's great. So we're still over by Newfield Construction then would be four hundred and forty one thousand. Why is it five thirty four, six twenty five? I understand we subtracted the four hundred thousand, but why did the PBC vote on four hundred and forty one thousand? So it's less than the five thirty five, obviously. Why is it more? Just because we're going off that nine thirty four price?
What?
So they, they voted to keep that contingency within the construction manager's allowance, therefore if the project runs past the calendar date that they submitted their proposal on.
Yeah.
Start billing weekly, monthly, past that calendar date. But if the project does run a little bit behind from what's been proposed, then the town will start incurring those additional costs for the additional construction manager support. They want to keep a little bit of that in there. I think, I think the only, the separation of the funds would be the additional ten percent on top of project contingency to also pay on this point is the allowances are built into that O bid of four, four million and change from all state. Then that bid, it's a two hundred thousand dollar allowance and there's a few others identified.
Right.
Built into that four million dollar bid.
Right.
PC recommended ten percent on top of that. And the town was requesting to put another ten percent on top of the PBC's recommendations. Internal contingency, owner contingency, which is outside of it's owned in any contractor bid right now currently. This is the corporation council's point. This is strictly owner contingency, ten percent on top of allowances and the ten percent recommended by the building commission.
So that's why it's five thirty four.
Correct.
On that one. All right, I guess we can go with that higher one, but again, I I don't, I just still don't understand why our numbers should be consistent when we have a public building commission that's done their homework and it now comes to us and you read the minutes and it's different and it's a lot different and part of it, I understand it's a contingency in different things. I guess there's a difference of opinion. I understand that too, but
And that was very clear.
Did, did you, I, I assume you worked together with the public building commission?
Correct, it was myself, the public works director, the commission, and everyone was there that evening. It was, it was very clear and understood that the recommendation was noted in the minutes and they said if, if the council, the board of finance, the town, the, the whole want to incorporate additional contingency, they said that's, it's a purview of the town, but they are recommending the project.
Gotcha.
The owner wants to put anything on additional on top of that.
Right.
And that could, that they could be discussed with the council, which is for you tonight.
Gotcha.
One comment. Kind of ties in with what Charlie had said. This Newfield construction, they came in with a bid of four million sixty three. Now?
All state, all state.
All state, that's all state.
That's all state.
Newfield's the managers, they're the managers. Yeah, they're the general.
Because this is a government or a state project. Why on earth are they not considered one wage dependent number? They now can represent thirty percent like they mentioned.
Correct, as far as the public bid for all state and Newfield, that the wage rates were published with the bid. So everything in that four million dollar bid, who's prevailing?
They included it.
It does include.
The only one that excluded it was the asbestos contract.
Yeah, yeah, them. Gotcha, gotcha.
Charlie brought that up. Corporation Council, Jeff, if you could, just a question for clarification, so Has Pro's proposal is under a hundred thousand dollars, it's utilizing state contract, it's not part of the bid package with the low bidder contractor, but the owner wants to use that through the project. Are we do we need to do prevailing wage regardless because it's part of the project?
Are federal funds being used to pay it?
ARPA money.
Yeah.
If ARPA funds are being used, then the federal uniform guidance procurement standards apply under the code of federal regulation, so you'd have to pay prevailing wage.
So that, that good catch on that, then we were, we were running with under a hundred thousand doing it outside the project, but that being said, we may have to amend that.
So it has pro, the has pro, the has pro piece.
But you'll probably raise them twenty grand.
Yes.
Bring that back to you for the next meeting, but
Okay.
We'll tonight.
What, what?
Yeah. Schedule for the project.
Sure. So you can bring that piece back if we got to fix it?
Yeah, if you're in agreement.
Yeah.
Utilize them on contract, once the amended proposal establish the rates, but
Yeah.
Keep them on the schedule to keep all on the projects.
Yeah, no, no, we get that. Yeah, that, and that's just the Has Pro. Oh, the Has Pro part, yeah, that, that has to go too. Can we add that? Can we do it?
It would be a total amount. So I guess lump sum would be the, the best case scenario and then we can adjust the numbers if we need to.
Can we adjust it later? So, yeah.
First of all, I was told that you really had to move on this because of
Quite on here, yeah.
So that's why we're having a special meeting tonight. There is, which can be changed, I understand, but you have a, you're going to There is, which can be changed, I understand, but you have a, um, you're gonna have a town meeting on Monday, May eighth.
Right.
And part of that is, um, I had advertised tomorrow morning.
Right.
In the paper for five-day notice, which you can go lower, I don't know if you can go higher.
But.
Right?
Yeah.
Excuse me.
I'm, I'm saying, I, I know, but I'm saying, we, we have a schedule here.
Right, that's why we did it, yeah.
Being done, so going low.
If we have. If we have money in a contingency. For. The main contract. Can't some of that be used for the has pro contract?
I think that's where we're getting at, yeah, if we approve the amount as presented.
Yeah.
And then, can then come back to you and.
You get going, right, right.
The owners can finish towards prevailing wage.
We always do that, right?
Benefit would be to approve it as presented and then reduce it down the road.
Yeah.
Just to keep everybody.
Okay, that makes sense. I know, I know we need to get this to the public hearing that way, that's what we had it tonight, that's what we have at the eighth to get this going, we don't wanna hold up the HVAC project. It's, it's taken long enough to get there, so. All right, so then the only number. We're looking to change would be that first motion, which would be, um. Instead of the four, eight seventy-five, six hundred, it'd be four million, four hundred and sixty-three thousand. That's it, right? Then we're, so we're good, we're good with that, we're all good with that? And that's just because it's a lower contingency on that. So it'll be four million, four hundred and sixty-three thousand. For the, uh, for, that's the all-state, uh, part of the contract. Right. That, and that, that's because of the public building. Vote and recommendation, that's. Or, that's why, that's why it's coming out that way. Come back around, if it goes up, we, I'm sure in two years, unfortunately, it will go up, but. We don't know, yeah.
A project might cost more than anticipated, I'm shocked.
That's a shocking thing to see.
Sage rounded the number, that's nine point eight percent, just for the record then.
Okay. Okay.
You know that. Contingency nine point eight percent.
Again. Well, they, they can come back to the well, they always do in most projects we've seen. Of this magnitude, so understood. I think the high school, when they built the high school, didn't they go back to about three different referendums because it kept going up? At least three referendums because they kept going up, so not like we haven't been through this, but not us, we weren't here then, but. The town hasn't been through it before, so hopefully that won't be that, that bad, but, uh. Okay, so if we're good, we could start with the motions.
All righty, move to award contract number twenty-twenty-three dash twenty-four unit ventilator replacement. And HVAC upgrades on Emma Hart Willard Elementary School to Allstate Construction Incorporated of Farmington. An amount not to exceed four million, four hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars, subject to appropriation approvals. At the town council and board of finance following a required town meeting, be held on May eighth, twenty-twenty-three.
Second, thank you, any other comments or concerns? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, all right, so moved. Number two.
Move to amend the motion approved by the town council on December thirteenth, twenty-twenty-two to award contract number. Twenty-twenty-three dash oh eight for construction management services on Emma Hart. Willard Elementary School HVAC project, Newfield Construction Group LLC of Hartford. An amount not to exceed nine hundred thirty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars. For the motion for award contract number twenty-twenty-three dash eight. For construction management services on Emma Hart Willard Elementary School HVAC project. Newfield Construction Group LLC of Hartford, Connecticut, an amount not to exceed five hundred thirty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Well, yeah, second on that, but. But yeah, well, that, I, I thought so.
You wanted to change that one too?
Well, the nine thirty-four, we don't.
We're canceling now.
We're canceling that amount, right?
Just amending it.
We're amending it.
Amending it?
Yeah, you're reducing.
Five thirty-four.
Okay.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, we're amending, amending it to the lower amount, yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
What was the amount that it's gonna be, five thirty-four, six twenty?
It's on the motion, it's at last.
The number.
We didn't change that number. Okay. Yes, so if there are any other comments or questions? If not, take a vote on the motion, all is in favor.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, all right, so moved, number three.
Move to utilize state contract, DAS contract number. Two zero PS X zero one five four and approve. The estimate from has pro incorporated of West Hartford, Connecticut, in the amount of ninety-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars. Which includes a seven thousand dollar project contingency. For abatement of asbestos-containing floor tile and mastic along with air clearance, monitoring, monitoring. Associated with classroom ventilation replacements at Willard School. In conjunction with the HVAC project, subject to appropriation approvals by the town council and board of finance. Finally, required town meeting to be held on May eighth, twenty-twenty-three.
Thank you, second on that? Thank you, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, all right, so moved. And one more, the easiest one of all.
Move to call a town meeting at six thirty PM on May eighth, twenty-twenty-three. Will approve a fiscal year twenty-three non-budget appropriation of. Four hundred eighty-four thousand dollars from the general fund interest on investment account. To capital non-recurring fund HVAC Willard account. To fund HVAC upgrades at Willard Elementary School.
Thank you, second on that? Right, thank you, any other comments and questions on that? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, all right, so moved.
Very much, thank you.
Thanks Doug, thank you. So we will be here on, uh. May eighth at six thirty, Monday, yeah, Monday, May eighth at six thirty, this coming Monday. To just have the public meeting, or public, um, town meeting to approve this, so we can get. Willard moving along, which is great to finally get it moving along.
We're gonna have the town meeting and afterwards you'll have a special town council meeting.
Oh, to, to vote on that, yeah, okay.
We have to waive rule seven or whatever, no, no.
There's no bonding, so we should be good. Yeah, so that'll be easy, that should be a short meeting, famous last words, famous last words. That's not for sure.
Peter, the guy in the middle keeps talking a lot.
Somebody's gotta do it, that's what they pay me for, the big paycheck, they get that big paycheck. Okay, uh. Where are we at, budget?
Budget.
The budget.
Topic, so.
Woo-hoo, all right.
You rejected it, send it to the board of finance, it's a thirty-second soundbite on it, I'm not gonna say more than that.
Yeah.
Order finance increase the board of ed, was it by three hundred thousand, offset it by fund balance. It's. It has come to you now, you.
Lucky us.
You accept it, reject it, or. Produce it.
So.
The options.
Yes, so. Obviously with the, we, maybe start with the board of ed, because so the board of ed, the, the only thing we could do, obviously, we, we couldn't increase it any. If that was our, uh, opinion, we could only obviously accept it, reject it, or. We reduce it. If we accept it, it will go forward that way to the, to the referendum on the twenty-third. So I know there was, listen to the. The board of finance meeting the other night. Raoul, and, uh, it's interesting, um, but, so there was much debate about it, listened to it all and, um. That was a compromise that the board of finance came up with, so more than what we had proposed before, so, I mean, now we are. Well, the board of finance with the three point six percent, right, is over. The contractual obligations for. The projected, I think the contractual obligations are what, three point? Or are they in this budget year? Three point four something, and I'm using the. Superintendent's budget, so that there were three point four, three percent, we were, the, the original, right, um. Uh, board of finance was three percent, we, we tried to do a three point two, went to the voters, they rejected that as too low. And, uh, we, we're now at three point six percent, which is above the contractual obligations. I might note that last year, at two and a half percent. Which was what we approved last year, uh. The contractual obligations were three point six eight percent, so we were well below the contractual obligations last year. With the budget increase to the board of ed at the two and a half. And they had a surplus, so this year, if, if this goes through the, um. At the three point six percent, we're actually above the contractual obligations. So we're well above the funding that we funded the board of ed with for last year. So, um. Uh, that's it, I mean, again, we can't raise it any. We can only reduce it, what do you folks think, if we're good with that number?
Well, for clarity, if we reject it, then what, if we approve it, then what, just.
Yeah.
For those of us that are new.
Yeah, then also if we reject it, we, we would go back to the joint meeting and since. They've already had their discussion on three to three, what they want and they compromise to the three point six. I, I don't, I don't know if we'd get anything out of that, but.
Right.
Kinda be back trying to, you know, I don't know what we'd be doing, but.
Gotcha.
Right, I don't, I, I.
Dale mating.
That's what I think.
Okay.
I mean, we can only project that.
Approve it, it goes where?
To the referendum.
And then if the town.
Depending on what the town does, it would come back around.
Right, if they do not approve it, then we're.
Back to the board of finance.
Okay.
Back to us.
Okay.
Back to the joint meeting perhaps.
Okay.
And no more referendums though, so at some point, we'll have to.
Only two referendums.
Hopefully compromise if it gets that far and.
Gotta respond to what the voters are asking for.
Yeah, yeah, try and do the, whi- which we did now, I mean, right, they said to.
Sure.
For the board of ed side, uh, they said too, too low and. I think Raoul and the board of finance did a great job and they worked it out and, you know. Beat each other up enough and, uh, they got it, they got to compromise that raise that. Sure.
Sure.
Oh, you're leaving, I didn't know, I didn't know you were leaving. Run while you can, Peter, run while you're out of here. We're in, in recess for a moment. Okay, we are back, uh, back in session. So for the board of ed side, what, what, what do we? All thinking, go with that, um.
Yes.
Recommendation?
Yep.
From board of finance, okay. So that's that, so now we go to town side, um. And the town side, Roche, correct me. They, they do something with two hundred and fifty grand, would it, did they take? They didn't, did they not lower the town site at all? They didn't, right? Nothing, right? Which is not what the voters asked for. So I'm surprised they did what the voters wanted with the board of ed, but they didn't do it, I understand it was, uh.
Fifteen votes.
Well, you know, we went, we've gone through this before, but, you know. The votes matter.
Yep.
If they don't matter, then there's no point in. You can win by one, that's how it works in our democracy here, so. My recommendation is that we lower the town budget some more. And, uh, what I would take is what, 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 what we had talked about with the board of, the board of finance had spoken about, um. Which would, which would be to remove the rest of the capital out of the budget, which is, uh, one million, seven hundred thousand dollars.
No, no, billion seventy.
A million seventy, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yes, million seventy. Uh, take the hundred grand out of the local match for grants, that was just that contingency fund we needed if we needed to. Match something. And take the, that reduced the PD renovation bond, right, it's a hundred fifty-five thousand. So it would be at one point, one million, three hundred and twenty-five thousand would be taken out of the budget. A town budget, which would, the mathematicians. Maybe Kevin or the Roche, what would that do to our mill rate? If we took that one million, three hundred and twenty-five thousand out of the town budget.
Mayor, reduce the proposed mill rate down to twenty-nine point five six.
And it's, it's, uh, the current one, uh, in the budget is thirty point oh two, right?
Correct.
So my thinking on this is this, um. Certainly the largest amount. The one million seventy thousand. Those are capital projects, um. We. Will have. We have about eleven million dollar, right, um. Eleven million dollar, um, fund, uh, fund balance now. Not five million, as I read.
I, I had sent the correction.
Oh, they didn't print it, okay.
Published the wrong one.
I read that, I like, no, 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 I, I know, I, I know you're new and give you the latitude, no, 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 right.
I sent the correction, but it didn't make it.
All right, all right, no, we appreciate that, um.
Sorry about that.
It's okay, so, and we're looking at a five million dollar surplus, which that would go into fund balance too, so we're talking sixteen million dollars, um. We certainly have plenty of money to fund the capital projects, some of them were taken out already, right, what was it, two point eight million in capital projects? Capital expenditures, didn't they take some out already, the board of finance?
Yes.
Yeah.
In the twenty-four budget.
Yeah, in the twenty-four budget. This would be the rest of it, but not, to not be done. We will just not tax people on that and when the new budget year starts with our five million dollar surplus. We'll, um. Start, you know, with the capital projects and there's six hundred grand in there for. The school projects, there's town projects, so we have the funding with the surplus as we go into twenty-twenty-four to do that, but why include that in the tax rate? This would lower the taxes for folks going down to twenty-nine point five six. Remember now we're at thirty-four point. Uh, thirty-four point three one. Board of finance budget has this as thirty point oh two, even with the increase, the board of ed at three point six percent. We go down to twenty-nine point five six. We're saving the taxpayers. Uh, some more money, don't forget, this still doesn't erase the increase from the revaluations. Which is about twenty percent for most homeowners. So the, the least amount of taxes we can add on to that. I think our taxpayers deserve it, knowing that we have a five million dollar surplus coming, that we can, we can, uh. Get most of those capital projects done with, with the piece of that, not even using all of that. Because I thought the total capital budget was like two point eight million. I thought, somewhere around. Right?
Yeah.
Something like, right, what is it, two point?
Six eighty-six.
Okay, so two point six, so, you know, we will have the funding in the new year to do that. And hence by lowering the mill rate, we're not, we're, we're taking probably a little bit off their revale increase, but not. Not. You know, we're sure we could do more, but there's nothing we could do with the revale. It is what it is, so. We only could do our very best to keep the rest of the tax increases very low by lowering our mill rate, which is not. Hurting anything in town or any projects to come, so. We will do those capital projects, obviously the HVAC one, the PD, all of them, we're gonna do them all, but. This would help us, so that would be my recommendation for the town side. As the voters said, they, I know it was a closer margin. But nonetheless, they said, uh, too high in the town budget, they'd like to see it reduced. So that's the way to reduce it and those are some recommend. So that's the way to reduce it, and those are some recommendations I might add from the board of finance. And they couldn't come to an agreement the last time in our joint meeting, if you remember that. So. I put those forward now to send that forward to the voters. What do you guys think?
What are the capital projects that we would be, since holding up or stalling in any way?
We're not stalling anything.
We would just do that, cuz nothing.
We'll just do it at the new fiscal, I mean, it's already, by the time the.
Like, there's nothing scheduled, is what.
No, no. No, we'll do them, that's what we did last year. And the year before, and we've been, listen, it's a good place to be, that we have a surplus.
Right.
That we can use and not include these amounts in the budget.
Sure.
Hence to lower the mill rate.
Right.
So why you ask, if you have savings already, why ask people for more money?
Right.
Especially on a revale year.
Understood.
Yeah, they're getting killed this year.
This is kind of a compromise, we're giving a little more to the school, and a little more to the taxpayer.
And, you know, though, and you don't know, they don't wanna hear this, it it's a double edged sword. It's it's a good thing our, let's face it, it's a good thing our values have gone up, it's a town people wanna live in. It's a phenomenal school system. And it's mandated by the state every five years, we do the revale, right? But we hit, we we hit, no, nobody, listen, we, no, listen, we're all up, but nobody wants to pay more, but. You know, it's mandated, we have no choice, and it hit at a bad time, right?
Yes.
With the whole COVID, the pandemic, folks were looking for homes, Berlin's a desirable place, and you know, values went up, so that's just what we're faced with. Every town's faced with it around us, that we're no different than anyone else. Most of the values have gone up in many towns, and we've got to pay for that, and. You know, cost of. Living is expensive too, so.
Yeah, the other upside is, the industrial actually went down, which hurt the homeowners, the homeowner that can't remember the weight. But with the little lower mill rate, it will make Berlin more attract attractive for investment by industry and commercial, so. Hopefully it'll raise our grand list a little more.
Right, right.
And don't forget, the more the grand list goes up, certainly with the business investments.
The lower the.
Less on our homeowners.
Yes.
And I think we had, would we have two point two million in additional revenue this year, something like that. So as these other commercial projects we have. As they, you know, get completed, there'll be more, cuz some of them are under some tax abatements, so as those as those tax abatements go away. We'll have more revenue, and as we continue to pay down our debt, which we're doing. More revenue to spend on projects and fund our school system and fund our. Bridges and roads and buy new fire trucks and all the fun stuff we need to do to run the town, so you know, I think good time is coming. That debt payment gets lowered, it's more money, you know, off the revenue that we have, and. Projects get completed, so. I think we're all, we're headed in the right direction, you know, we run the town. Very responsibly, we have a triple A bond rating, we didn't have that a few years ago, so we're we're by lowering our debt, that's something that they're looking at. Obviously Moody's is the one who rates us, not independent, you know, folks at Moody's rate us, so. That's it, what do you guys think?
I'm gonna support the motion, however. I I think it's really dangerous to keep pulling. The this out of the budget every year, when you know, you pull, you have capital projects for a reason.
Yeah.
And we keep pulling it out of the budget, fortunately, we've had a surplus, but what happens if we don't?
We wouldn't do it.
A lot of that surplus is being promised already. I mean, we've got three million going, or three hundred thousand going through the board of Ed. Right, that's coming out.
That came out of fund balance already, right?
Same thing.
Same thing, that came out of fund balance, yeah.
So I mean, like I said, I'm gonna support it, but.
I appreciate that.
I think we should really watch what we do in the future.
But look at it this way, so we have a five million dollar surplus, as you just said, we're taking three hundred grand out of that, so that leaves what, four point seven million? Our capital projects are what, two point six million? Total, if we took all the ones that, so we're still not spending all surplus.
I understand.
Not even close, so.
Yeah, I just think it's a dangerous practice to do it purely.
I, if we didn't have a projected surplus, I would agree with you, but remember. By putting this in the budget, and again, with the surplus projected. And every year, they projected the surplus, like last year, it was more than they projected. This was a few months ago, this was four, four and a half million, now we're at five million. It could be more by the time we get to the end of the fiscal year. It could be less, more or less, but you know, usually Kevin's pretty good with his projections, so we have to rely upon him, but. We're just not taxing people on this money in the budget. When we have it to take care of after the first of the year, and we're not, after the new fiscal year starts, and. You know, we're not not gonna do the projects, I mean, that's the point, no one's taking the projects out of the budget to never be done. They're going to be done with that surplus, of which it appears we have. More than enough surplus to complete the two point six million, yes, sir?
Just one, all of you aware of it, that by June, we should have the bids back for the police station renovation? So that we anticipate in maybe three, four million dollar range, so absent any other funding mechanism, that'll fall into fund balance.
Yep, and we're hoping, we're very hopeful, as you guys remember. We have, how much have we put in for the that grant? Three point nine million from the state, which. Should know soon, before the end of fiscal year.
And what, and what was the grant for?
For the police station.
For police station.
So we wouldn't need to expend.
Right.
Yeah, no.
Right.
Are you getting any support from our legislature? Hope you can wake that one guy up, that would be good.
We're hoping. We're hoping.
Sorry.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
Just to clarify, you're proposing all the recommendations made at the joint meeting, right?
Correct, other other than the. The fund balance.
Six hundred.
Yeah, that's six seventy-five, correct, that's not included. Yes.
We're staying with a larger increase for the school.
Correct.
Than what the joint meeting proposed.
Correct, three point six we're staying with. So that would be. That, so everyone's okay with? All right, so. We're gonna, we're gonna make a motion, right, somewhere here?
Yep.
How do we calculate that, I know it changes what's in our.
I move what he said.
Not getting off that, easy. So. What's the motion? That we reduce.
Last one is remove capital by a million seventy.
Right.
You have to identify all the items.
Yeah, so we'll remove. Well, well, yeah, well, yeah, so remove capital by.
You don't need to.
It's a, it's one motion, right, cuz. The town, okay. And the the bond. Okay, that's one motion.
We need to make a reference, because the last time, all the capital items were identified. Can make reference to, as noted in the board of finance submission, that they all have different things like, you know. Do with the high school and dump truck advance and all of that, so at least you need to make a reference to that list.
Okay.
A million seventy totaling. The list that was submitted.
Reference the list to the board of finance. Of the capital.
If you wanna read every item.
No, not really.
It's.
Charlie doesn't, he might wanna read every item.
I'm sorry, one point.
One million seventy.
One million.
Seventy thousand.
That's one. And then second reduction is the remove the local match.
Hundred thousand.
Hundred thousand. And the the match for grants.
Funding. By HVAC, but.
Reduce.
Reduce interest of a hundred fifty-five thousand, right?
Right, that was the interest, right, yeah.
For a total of one million, three twenty-five.
And twenty-five thousand.
Three twenty-five?
Yeah, three twenty-five. Okay. So that would be that motion. All right, that's one motion, I'll have Charlie. Read it. Town, town budget by.
Reduce the town budget by removing. One million, seventy thousand dollars in capital. Projects as noted by the board of finance list.
Yep.
Reduce the local funding for matching grants by one hundred thousand dollars. And remove a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. That was set aside for bonding for future HVAC product. Projects. For a total of one million, three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Okay, second on them. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, all right, so moved. So. Now. Have to send.
We have to.
Yeah, we have to vote on the whole, but well, the whole budget's gotta go now, yeah, so. Wanna vote on the school budget separately now?
Yes.
Or the whole thing? Yeah. We'll just make a motion, we we would. Agree with the. Board of, board of finance recommendation. Funding for three point six percent increase to the board of Ed.
That we.
Agree.
Agree with the board of finance funding for the education budget.
At three point six percent.
Three point six percent increase.
Okay, second on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. All right, so moved. Yeah, that's what I wanna do, that's what, do we need the dollar amount, that three hundred thousand? We can say.
Million, oh eighty-two, five ninety-six. You wanna have that in the motion.
Shouldn't.
That's what you said, right?
Yeah, shouldn't we, but but shouldn't it be one motion, it's one budget, right, it's not separate, Jeff, hey Jeff?
It is, it is, despite the fact that it's one budget.
Okay.
The way that this section of the charter reads is that you're considering the budgets, so.
Budgets, okay.
You know, a motion, a motion approving the revised. Budget as presented by the board of finance for the board of Ed.
Yep.
Then you've already made the motion for your line item reductions to the proposed town government budget.
Okay, so those are both made and and voted on, so would we need another motion to send the whole thing to referendum, or is that just? What would be the next motion, any others, or?
No.
No, we're done.
Yeah.
Okay, well, are we done, are you sure? We're done.
Well done for a fourth.
All right, so that's off the referendum on May twenty-third. And, all right, we'll see how, we'll see how it goes. So that is the end of our agenda for this evening, so we will. Go ahead and take a motion to adjourn.
We'll move.
All right, second. All right, any other comments or questions, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, it's so moved. All right, thank you everyone for coming out tonight, I appreciate it.